Good evening. The September 8th, 2015 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting anyone in the audience to please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system of the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or on matters which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a P form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures are applicable for each on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Ms. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Ms. Carol Ely, District 2.
Present.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. George Tomlin, Superintendent.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Bobby Knight, Program Specialist, please come forward and introduce the STEM Alliance Scholars and Teachers who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening. Thank you.
Bobby and I are going to be happily presenting the STEM Alliance Teachers and Scholars for you this evening, and we'd like to start off with one of our STEM Alliance Teacher Winners, Kathy Andriola from Stanton, Weersdale, will be coming forward to give inspiration for our meeting.
The goal of the STEM Alliance Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Project is to increase enrollments in higher level math and science courses as well as state and national examination results. To meet this end, the STEM Alliance Teacher Program is designed to recognize outstanding mathematics and science teachers who share best practices within their district. I am honored to represent our district alongside these other teachers and students. I will now offer a prayer of thanks. Dear Father God, thank you for the gifts and talents that you have given us. Thank you for giving us sound minds and the knowledge to prepare lessons that motivate the students of the 21st century. It is by your power and strength that we are equipped each and every day. May you be blessed by the work of our hands. In Jesus' name, amen.
We're going to have one of our STEM Scholars, Anna Mitchell, who will be presenting the pledge for us.
Thank you, Jackie Ballas.
I pledge allegiance. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I have a special guest to introduce. Captain Steve Nakagawa from the STEM Alliance is here to just give you a little update on the program and our participation in that program, so come right on that.
Hello, I am Steve Nakagawa. I am representing the STEM Alliance of Central Florida, and I wanted to come and tell you a little bit about what it is in case you hadn't heard. It is a group of organizations and individuals that represent our community from all across Central Florida, from Tampa Bay to the Space Coast, the now thirteen counties of the Central Florida School Boards Coalition. The STEM Alliance is that connection or liaison between what industry needs for students in STEM technical education worlds and what schools do to deliver that education. So the STEM Alliance delivers things like awards, like you're going to see today, to all the ten and now thirteen counties of those school districts. And engineering is elementary for elementary schools, Lego Robotics for middle schools, and connection of experts and their careers into those classrooms all across the Central Florida area. So I'm really proud to be here. We have a lot of folks that participate in the Board of Directors that lead this effort, and we're just honored to be able to see the students here with the teachers that have delivered this STEM education. So thank you for hosting these awards.
Thank you.
Okay. So Bobby, if you would like to come forward? Just help snack.
Oh, sure.
We have four outstanding science and math teachers that we would like to honor today. The teachers submit an application recommended by their administrators, and then a district committee reviews that and selects the teachers that are represented today. So we have for our high school science teacher, I'm not sure if she made it here or not, Janice David from Westport High School. So she may be running late.
She's almost coming home.
She's here. Oh, she's here. I knew Janice told me she was coming, so. And just wait right up here. And just wait right up here. And I do want the board to see these beautiful Prism trophies that the teachers will receive, and they'll also receive a packet with some information and a certificate. Very nice certificate and a nice envelope for you, okay? With a very special award. And for our middle school math teacher is Cassie Hicks. And Cassie, what middle school are you from?
I'm at Fort King.
Fort King Middle School. And here's your certificate and very important envelope. And we also get to honor not only two secondary teachers who are outstanding, but we get to honor two elementary teachers, one for science and one for math. So our science elementary teacher is Melissa Hitchcock, and she's from Wymina Park Elementary. Here's your great certificate. And then you've already met Kathy Andriola, and she's from Stanton, Weersdale. And so these are our current STEM Alliance outstanding math and science teachers. And I've had the opportunity to work with most of these teachers very closely, and I can tell you they do wonderful things for our students. Now Bobby is going to be calling out our STEM Alliance Scholars, so I will let her have the floor, and I will do the handing out.
I have the honor of introducing to you some of our amazing math and science students. The first student I'd like to introduce is Logan Potter, outstanding math from Fort The second student is Graham Cope, outstanding math from Osceola Middle School. Yes. Sorry, technical difficulties.
There you go. And there's a nice certificate inside and a letter and an envelope for you.
Next is Margaret Waddell, outstanding science, Fort King Middle School. Next is Anna Mitchell, outstanding science, Osceola Middle. Sofia Lopez, outstanding math, Liberty Middle. Alex Bojma, outstanding math, Fort King Middle. Skylar Pittman, outstanding science, Osceola Middle. Jacob Mosley, outstanding math, Vanguard High School. And a third one. Gabriella Sullivan, outstanding science, Vanguard High School. Haley Pittman, outstanding science, Forest High School. Harris Cannon, outstanding math, Forest High School. Mariah Hamby, outstanding science, Vanguard High School. We'd also like to recognize those that are not in attendance today. Cameron Martinez, outstanding math, Fort King Middle. Isiara Aguirre, outstanding math, Dunellen Middle. Madison Hanley, outstanding math, Fort McCoy Middle. Eric Shaw, outstanding math, Osceola Middle. Yasmin Bacchus, outstanding science, Bellevue Middle. Brandon Schultz, outstanding math, Forest High. Kevin Starr, outstanding math, Westport High. Vincent Vons, outstanding science, North Marion High. Philip H. Smith, outstanding math, Forest High. Cassandra Mosley, outstanding science, Vanguard High. And Cody List, outstanding science, North Marion High.
And as you're done, parents, take your pictures.
Yeah, Mom, why not?
We're very, very proud of these students, and we bring in a new group every year of seventh graders, and if they maintain their GPA and they maintain their rigorous academics and engagement in science and math activities, they are able to be a sustaining scholar that we continue all the way until they graduate. So we're very proud of the support of the STEM Alliance to encourage our students to go into those STEM careers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to tell our teachers how they're so proud of you, and you can look at the students and see the work you've done, and it's displayed right in front of you. And I'm just so proud of you and the students, just to see all of you all. It's a lot this time, Jackie, and the number keeps growing every year, and I'm just so proud of our district, our teachers, and our students. Thank you.
I wanted to congratulate all of the students. You're doing a great job. Keep up the good work, and when you get in front of the camera, that kind of motivates you to keep going, doesn't it? And our outstanding teachers, I hope that you are peer teachers to some of our beginning teachers because you're such great role models, which is what our new teachers need, so congratulations to all of you.
Miss Stacy?
I would like to just say ditto to everything that my fellow board members have said. For someone like me, who I could do regular math, but I couldn't do that fancy stuff. And so, you know, when I look at the awards that you're getting for doing very difficult work, and I appreciate the Superintendent for, and thank you, Mr. Tomlin, for bringing these students and Mrs. Boynton for putting these types of things on the agenda because I believe that we, it's a very positive thing for children to come and embrace success. There's so many things in the school system they embrace, and by bringing them here, Mr. Tomlin, thank you, because we are embracing tremendous success, and that's what built the great school system. Thank you, Mrs. Boynton and Mr. Tomlin, for this presentation tonight.
Yes. I'm at the end.
Mrs. King?
I'm just going to tell everyone here, thank you for being awesome examples for our community, students and teachers alike. I'm just out of lots of words. I'm just grateful and thankful for you. And again, like Ms. Ely said, the teachers, you can just share your knowledge and your excitement for math and science. That's invaluable, more so, I think, than other professional development things we make it. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Yeah, it's always a pleasure for me to recognize our teachers and our students, and especially when we're involved with the STEM program in all thirteen counties now, because you are part of a larger organization and a larger group of people, and you have just about, in thirteen counties, you will have a group of students standing up in front of their school board, hopefully. And I just want all of you to know that you will be competing with those other school districts, and this is just your first step in your effort to be outstanding and move beyond where you are today, because you are outstanding now, but you have to move forward. And again, the STEM Alliance and the people that have really put this thing together throughout the districts, it's really a tremendous honor for you to be selected, and again, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. James, for getting it started. I thank you for getting this started many years ago, and it's grown into a wonderful program that is doing not only student and teacher recognition, but great learning in our schools. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thanks to the STEM Alliance group.
Yes, thank you, STEM Alliance.
Thank you, Jackie.
Jackie, I just wish I had a little bit of your energy. You just make me get excited. She's got so much enthusiasm. She's great. I've been too bad. I was a principal, I did a personal training. She's very, she's knowledgeable, too. She does things. She was a teacher. She's working on a new project. She's a senior. This is Jackie's last school board meeting. She's retiring at the end of October.
Ms. Ballas, would you come to the microphone, please? For something like that to slip out, and you're slipping out and doing with it, we are like, no, please come back, and we just want to thank you for your years of service.
Thank you.
It's just been a joy seeing you for me, you know, every, any place I am and I see you, it's like, oh, it's good to see her. She's very active in our district here.
I will still be very active in Marion County Public Schools and volunteering, and you know my heart is with these students, so now I'll have lots of time to pursue those ideas, too.
For just a moment, I'm sure Mr. James has something to say.
Jackie, I just want to say, on behalf of all of us that have worked with you through the years, even though we had our science fair with our honorary, and the many things that you have presented and brought forth to the school board, I'd like to say, hey, thanks to all the guys that you've come to touch, and especially the people in the science industry that where you created really a science phenomenon for us in Marion County. I hate to see you go.
I know.
But I won't say, welcome to the other side.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I will be, I will definitely be volunteering and helping when I can.
Well, I really can't say any more than congratulations, because I'll start crying.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really, it's, you know, bittersweet and everything, but I am looking forward to having a little time to rest and relax and figure out what I want to do in the next phase of my career.
We have this, we have this new policy we're approving where we can bring people back, Mr. Tomlin. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's always been a pleasure to bring our best in private subjects.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy your retirement.
Enjoy your retirement.
Bye-bye.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Boynton. Board, I recommend approval of the agenda for the September 8th, 2015 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting. The audio recording and DVD included is part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation, please?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 6th, 2015 administrative briefing and work session, August 11th, 2015 school board meeting, August 13th, 2015 briefing and work session? May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mrs. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any discussion? Call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes five zero. Mrs. Judy Zanetti, Public Education Foundation Officer, is here to recognize the new business partner for Dunellen High School. Would you come forward, Ms. Zanetti?
Well, good evening, Ms. Boynton, board members, Mr. Tomlin. It's always a pleasure to be here with you, and I always bring good news. And tonight I'd like to introduce Ms. Cheryl Goddard, and of course, I'd like to call it Mr. Ken McAtier, Principal of Dunellen High School. Interestingly enough, both of the people that I have with me here this evening are board members of the Public Education Foundation. Ken is our high school principal liaison, and Cheryl sits on both the board and our executive committee, so it's exciting to have them both with us this evening. And Cheryl is a great volunteer at the foundation, does a lot of work with us, as well as Mr. McAtier does as well. And I know that Dunellen High School's been looking for a business partner for some time now, and Cheryl and her firm, Collier Jernigan and Goddard CPA, has stepped up to fill that void, and they have an office here in Ocala and also an office in Dunellen. And I know that the person that Mr. McAtier will probably most closely work with is down at the Dunellen office and is a graduate of Dunellen High School. So with no further ado, I'm going to give them their certificates and then allow each of them to say a few words. Ms. Cheryl, that's for your office, and Mr. McAtier for your high school. All right, Ken, would you like to start?
I'll be very brief. On behalf of the staff and students at Dunellen High School, we are very excited about Collier Jernigan and Goddard becoming our business partner. It's wonderful to have a business partner after several years of not having one, so that's always great, but it's especially nice to have one who has a strong presence in the Dunellen business community, which not only offers us financial resources, but also offers us the opportunity for our students that are interested in business and accounting to have valuable resources for Mr. Evans and the other accountants that are in that office. So we're very, very excited about our partnership, and just want to thank Cheryl and her group again for stepping up.
Thank you.
Cheryl?
Thank you, Cheryl.
I'll be even briefer. I've never been a business partner. We've never been a business partner, so we are really looking forward to our alliance with Mr. McAtier and super excited about, you know, how we can add to the educational experience of the kids at Dunellen High School. So thank you for the opportunity. And I just wanted to say briefly that we've got many, many schools without a business partner, so if there's anyone out there that is interested in partnering with a school, please contact the Public Education Foundation. Thank you all, and have a good board meeting.
Thank you. Before you go, Cheryl, I want to just, I want to thank you. I've seen you at the foundation, and I know you work very hard, and for you to select Dunellen, I'm thinking, wow, that's an opportunity, and I was so proud to hear that. I know you were too, Mr. McAtier, but it's just, when you see her working and you listen to her at those meetings, you know she's very invested in our community, in our students, and thank you so much.
Mr. Great partnership for both of you.
All right, Board. May I have a motion to adopt the final fiscal year 2014 to 2015 budget resolution number thirty-eight for a special revenue other? May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mr. James. Any discussion? I call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to adopt the final fiscal year 2014 to 2015 budget resolution number forty for special revenue fund food service? May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mrs. King. Is there any discussion? I call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to adopt the final fiscal year 2014 to 2015 budget resolution number forty-one for special revenue other? May I have a motion, a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? I call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to adopt the final fiscal year 2014 to 2015 budget resolution number forty-two for general fund? I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? I call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes five to zero. May I have a motion to adopt the final fiscal year 2014, 2015 budget resolution number forty-three for debt service funds? May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? I call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to adopt the final fiscal year 2015 to 2015, 2014 to 2015 budget resolution number forty-four for capital projects fund? Motion and a second, please?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. King, seconded by Mrs. Ely. Is there any discussion? I call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes five zero. Thank you, Board. At this time, individuals who have completed the appropriate form prior to 5:40 PM will now have the opportunity to address the board. Before you begin your presentation, it is required that you state your name and address for the record. Additionally, you must spell your last name. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsion, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents wishing to address the board regarding a discipline matter will have the opportunity to do so at that time. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain some additional points.
Thank you. If you do plan to address the school board tonight, you need to be aware of the school board procedures. Copies of those procedures are available from Mr. Christian or from one of the front tables. Under the school board's procedures, audiovisual presentations are permitted if Under the school board's procedures, audiovisual presentations are permitted if provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting to the school board's assistant. A V. presentations are limited to a total of five minutes. The use of any student's name except by his or her parents or guardian, or identifying references to, or identification of other students and their families is strictly prohibited. Based on time considerations, the school board by majority vote may rightfully limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten the presentation time, move the public comment time to a different position on the agenda, or eliminate the public comment time altogether.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Lake. Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers for this evening?
No, we don't.
Oh, thank you. So moving forward, Board. May I have a motion to adopt new board policy six point one three one, and its contracts for employee services. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been brought by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mr. James. Mr. Superintendent?
Board members, at your request, this new board policy provides the opportunity for the district to employ individuals utilizing a temporary contract for services managed by a private employment company. This policy outlines the circumstances under which positions may be filled using this procedure.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this new board policy? Seeing none, Board, do you want to discuss? All right, Mrs. Stacy?
Okay, I've made some copies in here, Mrs. Boynton. Thought I made, I think I gave you. We can share one. After much discussion we've had on this, and I've had, just out of curiosity, I had a legal opinion on it done, and the concern that I remain with is that we still do not have this, we are putting the cart before the horse on this first paragraph. I understand, and I've spoken to Mr. Lake about this as late as today again, that we are allowing the superintendent to go ahead and go into a hiring situation, and nominate a person for approval to a special contract for staffing position that we don't, that we want to fill with someone that's in the retirement program, which I don't agree with anyway, but still, besides that, if we're going to do it, then we need to make sure that we're covered. When I spoke to Mr. Lake today, he told me that the part that we are covered, and that's what everybody's been telling me, that we're covered. And so today, I asked him for his statute that says we're covered. Well, that's just a coverage that says basically that all employees are subject to good cause. Well, we know that, and good cause could get us, as it has other districts that have elected superintendents, can get us into a combative situation with our superintendent. And actually, the superintendent could sue the board, and it could go on and on, and we've had situations like that in state previously. One thing that would totally keep that from happening is if we inserted in that very first paragraph, Mrs. Boynton, "In the circumstance superintendent determines the district has a critical staffing need," and it goes on as though the superintendent's completely in control, like the board has no control until it all gets done. I suggest that we insert just a few words, "Which requires the services of a, in the circumstance the superintendent determines the district has a critical staffing need, which requires the services of a person with unique experience and specialized knowledge of skills," that we insert, "He must first get his critical need approved by the school board. After approved, this policy authorizes the superintendent." Because what's happened is, we are authorizing the superintendent to go ahead and hire, go ahead and bring this person, talk to this person, before we even establish that there is a critical need. And now we're in a combative situation. And since this is something that's out of the norm for school boards, it's something we are bringing people back through an organization that, you know, we bypass all kinds of things, and the superintendent, you know, can hire whoever he wants, that instead of, because in the past, we had a situation where we did have an employee that we talked to, and then in the end, we said, no, let it put the employee in a bad situation, and put the superintendent, and put the board in a bad situation. And to keep that from happening, since we as a board have discussed, we will not do, we will determine whether there's a critical need for this position. I believe to allow the superintendent to go ahead, the way it reads now, he can just go ahead and nominate somebody, and it's all flowing along. We're putting the cart before the horse. We need to approve the position, it's critical to do this, and then hire someone.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy.
Is my position.
Is there any comment from any other board member?
Mr. Tomlin, I understood when we discussed this many times, that you will bring the person's name or the situation to the board for us to vote on, as far as hiring, is that correct?
In those rare occasions that this ever happens, yes, I would certainly discuss it with the board prior to any kind of record.
That's what I thought.
All right. Thank you. Before I'll give you, Mr. Lake, do you have anything to say?
I just want to say, the board may recall that I made a thorough presentation on this on June fourth in the workshop. Board members thoroughly discussed this. I believe that the change advocated by Ms. Stacy is inconsistent with the Florida statutes and Attorney General opinions that I've reviewed. And I think that the safeguards built into the policy more than adequately protect the district.
Thank you, Mr. Lake.
I just don't see any.
Just a moment, we're going to help. I would think that if you have the policy in front of you, and if you go to section eight, it says, "The superintendent's statement of critical need must be described in detail." So we are asking the superintendent to present to us a statement of need from the beginning. As we workshop this more than one time, before June fourth, we had it on our agenda, and the only reason this is on our agenda today is we had a consensus from the board to bring it on the agenda. And I do hear your concerns, Ms. Stacy, and I recognize you, it's my, go ahead.
And we say that he needs to bring this to include, you know, these things, but it doesn't say anywhere on here that the school board, that this position can be voted down by the school board. We would have to show, it could take us into a court situation with good cause. This honestly looks to me like it was written by the superintendent's attorney, but not our attorney.
Ms. Stacy, Mr. Lake is the school board's attorney. I want to bring that to your attention, and I just want everyone to know.
But they're not.
I've sat with him several times on this, and I think that, I hear what you're saying, but it's, Florida statutes does say that the superintendent does the hiring.
But we have to determine critical need on this very different position.
Okay.
And he would bring that person's name to us.
And the position to us.
This would be no different than hiring any other position. It would be absolutely no different.
Okay. So, I think if you go to item seven on this policy, and I'm going to read it word for word, it says, "Each superintendent nomination to the board under this policy shall be in writing and include job title, name of proposed person, if applicable, statement of critical need, summary of the job duties, contract term, and contract salary." I think this will come before us, and at the moment that it comes before us, we can have great discussion on it, Ms. Stacy, as well as little discussion, but at that point, he's telling us where, what department it is, if there's a name, what are the job duties, and why is it a critical need. And I think that it, this covers it right here.
Nowhere does it say that we determine whether there's a critical need. Nowhere, on this policy, nowhere.
We determine it by a vote.
It doesn't say that. We have no determination, it just says he will inform us of all of this.
Okay, once he's informed us of it, then it takes a full board vote to approve it.
Where does it say that?
This is a policy, so it is a known thing. Do you think that should be in here, Mr. Lake?
I believe that a board vote should be on this position. There's, it doesn't say, it just says all of these things he brings to us, but it doesn't say we have any authority on this at all.
We've had the same discussion about ten times. The board's authority is consistent with that for anything that comes before the board, any employee nomination by the superintendent.
So that's my point, thank you for making it, that this is no different than any other employee.
Excuse me, Ms. Stacy, let Mr. Lake continue, please, thank you.
And the board then reviews any nomination brought forth by the superintendent, and can, must accept that nomination, except for good cause found. And that is the Florida law on nominations by the superintendent.
So this is no different than any other person coming before the board?
Okay.
We will have a very hard time turning it down.
Not, if you read the first sentence.
To do otherwise would be inconsistent with Florida law.
That's why I believe we have to develop critical need, decide if the board agrees there is a critical need for the position before we hire the person.
Let me read this to you, okay? The very first paragraph, the fourth, the fourth line, "To fill such, to fill such position by nominating for board approval, a contract," is it to fill, just those little words, "to fill such a position by nominating for a board approval."
Mrs. Boynton?
Go ahead.
We do that on every single employee that comes before this board. When we hire principals, they come before us, and we approve the principal a nomination. We approve it. This is no different. We are getting into a situation here where it is absolutely no different than hiring any other person, and nowhere on here does it say the board determines critical need.
All right, thank you.
Nowhere.
Do I have a second on Mrs. Stacy's motion? The motion fails for like of a second. Call a question, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye. Nay, I guess I should say. I can't get back to my page. How do I get back, anyway, it's nay, I can't get back to my page. Are you asking me to vote for you, Ms. Stacy?
Mm-hmm.
What page are you on? Over there.
Thirteen.
Okay.
And the motion passes four one. May I have a motion to adopt revised board policy two point two, school board meetings. I need a motion and a second, please.
Which one are we on?
Two point two.
Two point two. Item fourteen on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mr. James. Mr. Superintendent?
Board, this board policy has been revised to align the policy with current procedures, clarifies wording, and updates laws implemented.
Thank you, sir. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this revised board policy? Board, any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Stacy?
Okay. I'm a little bit concerned about the wording, but not so much so, and you can probably convince me on that one, where when people come before, they address the board at a public hearing, I mean, at a public meeting, that they have to speak on matters appearing on the school board agenda, or on matters in which a school board customer takes action in regards to the operation of American School System. Would this include parents coming before us?
Yes, it would, but we just addressed the parents' portion at the end of the televised portion, that's the only difference.
Okay, but if they want to come before this section, they can.
They can.
If they want to come at any time.
At any time.
Okay. All right. And my other concern is on where we talk about it being unduly long, I think that might have been on B. That concerns me, because I know of a situation that, a few years ago, that someone in the community wanted to put on the agenda, and they were told that, you know, we have a long agenda, but it was something that was affecting what was happening at that time. It was going to be a little bit controversial, and so it ended up not going on the agenda. I think it, I don't, I think they finally ended up just coming at the end and spoke off the agenda. I'm concerned that if it's, that the superintendent shall place a presentation request on the next regular, I mean, it says, "In the event the superintendent or school board chairperson decides the agenda for the next regular meeting is unduly long." I really believe this is a school board meeting, and that the school board should, the school board chairman should decide these things. And in fact, I guess, I don't know what it said before in this policy. Did it say superintendent before? I don't know, because I can't tell.
It shows on the document, there should be strike throughs and.
There's not strike throughs, there's just, "In the event the agenda for the next regular is unduly long."
I don't know where you're referring to, Ms. Stacy.
I'm on B. of chapter two point oh oh, of School Board Governance and Organizations, but I'm just concerned that this should be something that the school board chairperson should decide, if the meeting is unduly long. I don't really believe that we work that hard. And if someone has something that they want to put before the board, and it means that we stay here an extra ten minutes, but yet it could be something that's kind of critical in the community right now that maybe needs to be addressed. And if we're trying to just use the "unduly long," which, who said, how many agenda items is "unduly long"? Or is it just wherever, however we feel that day? I don't agree with the wording on that. And then it even goes on to say that if the school board chairperson disagrees with the superintendent, that they must issue a mutual decision. I believe that this is a school board meeting, and I don't believe that the school chair should have to have a squabble with the superintendent and the district staff in order to get an item. I believe she or he should, it says, because we've added, that the superintendent and the school board chairperson shall confirm and issue a mutual decision. Or what? You know, or what? It doesn't go on. I just believe that this is something that the school board chairperson should decide on her, on the agenda at the time. I don't believe that the superintendent, because frankly, our school board meetings, if one goes longer than three hours, it's at budget time, or it's under a very unusual circumstance. And I don't turn into a pumpkin after a one and a half hour school board meeting. And I believe that we should be here as long as the public needs to talk to us. And I don't believe that we've ever had, I don't remember an agenda since I've been on the board that was unduly long. And so, you know, I'm concerned about that language, "unduly long." I believe we should serve, you know, for the people, however long it takes us to sit ourselves here, if we have to call in for pizza.
Ms. Stacy?
Ms. Stacy may not be finished on that.
But I have another one on the air.
I want to make a comment on what you've just said.
All right, Ms. Ely.
We both been on the board the same number of years. I can never recall us turning down anybody who wanted to speak to us. We just give a five-minute limit, but we've not turned down anyone that I am aware of. So I'm not sure what you're referring to.
You didn't ever know about it, because it was turned down.
Where?
We'll discuss it off the air. I don't want to get someone's name on here, but it was discussed off the air.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy and Ms. Ely. Mr. James, you have a comment?
I don't recall that. Ms. Stacy, where were you going with that?
That I would like to have the school board chairperson decide on the agenda, and as far as if it's too long, not the superintendent. Because I believe that if there's a controversial issue in the community that wants to be, that needs to be addressed, and we could use the, we could use the excuse, "Oh, the meeting's too long." Well, we don't even know what's considered too long. It's a very subjective thing.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy.
Are you making a motion at that?
Can I? Yeah, how do I go about that?
Just before you make your motion.
Well, let's do one at a time.
Okay, let's, you want to, I want to hear from the superintendent.
Okay.
Mr. Superintendent, go ahead.
I just want to share with the board, and those of you who have served in the capacity of the board chair or vice chair who have met with us know that an awful lot, and I would hope, I would believe that all of our people that are watching, and also those of you who are sitting as board members, understand that a great deal of work goes into creating an agenda. It is not created by an individual, it's not created by a board chair sitting here. There are three or four staff people that work on this thing for two or three months in advance. We have, there are actually board agenda items for January and February already established out there, and various staff members from around the district work continuously. She's not here in lab, but we'll talk about her. Brenda Flopketter is a slave driver. She drives us and makes us create documents that we have to have, and the document that you see before you, I dare say, has a thousand hours worth of man-hours put into it to present it for you to know. And like Mr. James and Mrs. Ely have already stated, and I do not recall a time when this board has turned anyone down that is here, that has rightful business, so to speak, and I'm not sure where this is going at all.
During the textbook, it was during the textbook time, textbook approval time.
Okay, Ms. Stacy, I don't think we need to respond, and I would just like it back to where you are. You have a motion you want to make?
I just believe that, let me get back to the one. If we're going to have an "unduly long," I believe we should decide what is "unduly long." If we're going to have an unduly long, I believe we should decide what is unduly long. If the board meeting's going to be longer than three hours, longer than thirty minutes, whatever we consider unduly long. Because I don't want someone in the community to say, um, "I was told that I can't address this issue, this is a hot topic in the community that they wanted to address because it was unduly long". There is no definition of unduly long. And I don't want that to be used as a gag order.
So how would you, how would you, Mr. James, go ahead.
Okay, I don't want to get into unduly long and all that stuff, because, because what's long for one person is not long for another person. Okay, now, I thought we had a amendment on the table. And I was interested in the, in the amendment in the sense that I, I do feel that the board chair should determine the meetings and the length of the meetings. I, I have no problem with that. All that duly long, I don't know where we're going with that.
I, I just need the motion so that the secretary can, can record it correctly and then we can vote on it. That would be an amendment to this.
Can we come, can we discuss this at a workshop and then come back? It's not like it's gonna.
So you're like, you're asking us to table this?
Could we table this and have a little discussion to get this board policy really right for the community? And then bring it back? It's not like it's the sky.
All right, Mr. James.
Uh, 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 it's okay. If she, if this is what she would like to do, that's fine.
Okay.
But I was under the impression that we were going to work to get this thing done simply because it was not, the board is in charge of the school board. And I was going to say, hey, that's, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Okay, now, we want to go and table it and then bring it back. That's fine.
There, there are two ways, I guess, you could handle that. Uh, one would be to, Mr. James withdraw his second and Mrs. Ely withdraw her, her motion that we have this and then we can decide. Other than that, we may complicate things over here with another vote.
All right, so what Mr. Stacy is saying, she has more than one motion she would like to bring to this, um, policy change. And so, Ms. Stacy, I believe that if you, rather than just go into your new item, maybe if the board says we want to, uh, you withdraw your motion and Mr. James withdraw his second, then this item can be tabled and bring, brought to our workshop for further discussion. And then you can bring the matter to the table then. Okay? So, Ms. Ely?
I, I don't see a reason why I should withdraw this motion. I think we need to vote on it.
Okay, and Mr. James?
I'll withdraw it, my second.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, at this point, um, the motion will not, so do we have a, a motion to table this from Ms. Stacy?
Yes, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mrs. King. So, is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, we're going to be voting to table this at this moment and.
Table PH fourteen.
PH fourteen.
Mm-hmm. We should be able to. Yeah, it's there.
All right, all in favor of tabling this motion? This policy change, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose, like sign.
Nay.
And the motion to table passes four to one. And there was a request for that to be brought to our work session.
Yes, ma'am, we'll, we'll schedule that for you.
All right, thank you so much. May I have a motion? Thank you, board members. May I have a motion to adopt revised board policy three point five one, photocopying of public records? Have a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. Ely. Mr. Superintendent.
This board policy has been revised to clarify wording and add a minimum fee for requests.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this revised board policy? Is there any discussion with board members? All right, Ms. Stacy, go ahead.
I'm on tonight. Okay. The question, the problem that I have with this board policy is that if you're in, um, the first paragraph, where it says, um, that we will charge fifteen cents for each one-sided copy or twenty cents for each two-sided copy unless a different fee is otherwise prescribed by the superintendent or per- permitted by Florida statute. I do not believe, again, that we should be relegating our responsibility to the superintendent. I believe if there is a, um, a fee that we charge, we should have it in writing somewhere and it shouldn't just be at the whim of an administrator, um, to change that. And so, you know, I don't understand, maybe the superintendent can explain better to me why we have that there.
I'm going to call on Mrs. Crisalka to help me with this, or Mr. Christian perhaps to help me with this, uh, in reference to the, the difference there prescribed by the superintendent. Can you help me, Mr. Christian?
As the person who usually handles these requests, I'm more than happy to, to respond to that. Occasionally, we get requests that require records that don't fit on eight and a half by fourteen inch paper. So therefore, we use eleven by seventeen inch, which is more expensive to purchase and it's more expensive to duplicate on, especially when you're doing front and back. So there's an additional cost to the district to provide that record.
Well, then, why can't we just have the, the fee, if it's twenty cents for each two-sided eight and a half by eleven, and it's twenty-two cents or twenty-five cents for each whatever size, other sizes we make copies on? I think it needs to be prescribed.
Architectural drawings, maybe this big or this big.
Oh, my gosh.
I, I don't know. I, I don't do this, Ms. Stacy, I hope you understand. Mr. Christian's office does this. When a, when a request comes in for a, an unusual sized paper copy, Mr. Christian works with that particular department. It generally comes from facilities, I would imagine, because of architectural drawings and things like that.
Okay, then.
I, I wish it was as easy as just, here's a checklist and you check off the appropriate price and paper size.
Okay.
In a perfect world, that would work, but that's not.
Okay. Then can we, then can we insert here, um, twenty cents for each two-sided copy eight and a half by eleven?
Well, I think state statute allows up to eight and a half inch by fourteen.
Well, then, can we put that in here?
That's already in there.
Where is it written? Okay. So that's every, everyone, I thought it says unless a different fee is prescribed by the superintendent. So it doesn't force, force sizes beyond the eight and a half by fourteen. Um, I think we just need some clarification because down the road, this policy will ride with us a long time. And Mr. Tomlin may retire and we'll have another superintendent. And I think that we just need to, I don't want to have another superintendent come in here and say, to shut down the public, "Oh, well, the board policy says I can charge this amount", is there in for, in state statute, is there a certain amount that can be charged for eight and a half by fourteen? I mean, where does this come from?
It's what you're already reading right there. Eight and a half by eleven or eight and a half by fourteen by state statute can be fifteen cents for a single side or twenty cents for front and back.
Okay, then it says unless a different fee is otherwise prescribed, that, a different fee for a different size then?
That's, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I think that's not clear here. Um, unless a different fee, um, and somebody could wordsmith it for me, for different sized documents.
Ms. Stacy.
For different sized paper.
Yeah. That's for me, you want, you want, what you're saying is you would like to have by the superintendent strike down and just say, prescribed or permitted by Florida statute.
Right, does it allow, um, a, a different amount by state statute?
Mr. Lake, you can help me here, but to my knowledge, state statute spells out specifically eight and a half by eleven and eight and a half by fourteen at fifteen cents for one side and twenty cents for two sides, or an additional fee for larger sized items. It doesn't spell out by page size, by record size, or anything of that nature.
So then, okay, so that's my question then. So state, so, so state statute then says this amount for.
Those two sizes.
Am I right?
Yes.
For those two sizes.
They give us that amount, Mr. Lake?
I have not reviewed that in a while, so.
I look at it on a regular basis. Those two sizes are spelled out in state statute.
For exactly how much they can charge?
Yes, ma'am. Front and back, eight and a half by eleven, eight and a half by fourteen.
I'll be fine with it then. If it's in state statute, I'm taking your word for it. And if you go back.
My job is on the line if it's not.
You know what? I have found you.
I deal with it every day.
To be very specific. And I have also found that you don't say something unless you know you're right. So I accept that.
If I'm not right, I will come back to you and say I was mistaken, but I deal with this every day.
If it, if, see, that was my clear, that was the clarification I was looking for. That we could not just, by the superintendent or his staff on a whim, change it from fifteen cents to twenty or to fifty cents because state, that's.
No, ma'am, no.
So, um.
Let me, let me state it clearly.
I, I see it clearly.
State statute spells out how much any public entity, be it a school board, the sheriff's office, the police department,
Or certain sizes.
any entity that is open to public business for eight and a half by eleven and eight and a half by fourteen, one-sided copy is fifteen cents, two sides is twenty cents.
And what is legal size? Is legal size fourteen?
Legal size is eight and a half by fourteen.
Okay, so then the legal size is already covered. This would mainly be for like plans and stuff like that.
As we mentioned earlier, yes, ma'am.
Not even legal size. Because legal size is covered. Okay, I'm fine with it. I withdraw my concern.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Christian.
Thanks to Mr. Christian.
Thank you for the clarification. And thank you, Ms. Stacy, for, um, bringing it to, to the board's attention, your concerns. Uh, is there any further discussion? I call a question. All who are in favor of the revised policy change, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. And the motion carries five zero. May I, may I have a motion to rename the football stadium at Dunellen High School, the Ned Love Field at Richard Kennedy Stadium? May I have a motion and a second, please?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. Ely. Mr. Superintendent.
The renaming of the stadium is in response to a petition request along with a letter of support from the Ned Love family for whom the football field is already named. The new name of Ned Love Field at Richard Kennedy Stadium will honor the lifetime achievements of Mr. Kennedy, who coached at Dunellen High from nineteen seventy-six to nineteen eighty-five and won back-to-back state championships during the nineteen seventy-eight and nineteen seventy-nine football seasons.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the renaming of the football stadium at Dunellen High School, the Ned Love Field at Richard Kennedy Stadium? Say, anyone here to discuss? Board, is there any discussion? Call a question. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. And the motion carries five zero. May I have a motion to adopt the District Emergency Management Procedure Manual? I need a s- motion and a second, please.
Second.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. King. Mr. Superintendent.
The manual is updated annually and provides the district with accurate and consistent procedures for handling disasters and emergencies that may occur.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the District Emergency Management Procedure Manual? Board, is there any discussion? Call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. And the motion passes five zero. The budget process involves public hearings to be held in the following order. A, rollback rate computation and Kennedy's budget amended to conform to a final budget. B, the resolution determining revenues and millages levied. That was revol- resolution fifteen dash oh seven. C, the final bu- budget. At this time, I recognize Superintendent Tomlin for further explanation.
Thank you, Ms. Boynton. Board, the total millage to be levied is greater than the rollback rate by sixteen point zero four percent. The required local effort millage is greater than the rollback rate by one point zero four percent. Each school board participating in the state allocation of funds for the current operation of schools must levy the liv- the millage set for its required local effort from property taxes. As a result of work sessions held by the board since the adoption of the tentative budget of five hundred and five million ninety-five thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars on July twenty-third, twenty fifteen, the following changes have been made and have been incorporated into the proposed final budget. Number one, change in beginning fund balance, overall decrease of one million five hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Number two, a change in budgeted revenue, overall increase of three million two hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Number three, change in budget expenditures, overall increase of three million six hundred and four thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. And four, change in ending fund balance, overall decre- decrease of one million nine hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. Board members, you received an email notification of these changes and hard copies were placed in your mailbox for review.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation that the board amend the adopted tentative public budget to conform to the, to the proposed final budget for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen? I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. Ely. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the board concerning the rollback rate and or amended tentative budget? And Madam Secretary, did you get any names? Board, is there any discussion? Call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Mr. Superintendent. Oh, wait a minute. And the motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent.
Board, the school board of Marion County, Florida proposes a total millage rate of eight point one seven two, which is greater than the rollback rate of seven point zero four two six mils by sixteen point zero four percent. I recommend the board adopt the resolution determining revenue and millages to be levied, levied for fiscal year twenty fifteen, six, twenty sixteen.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation that the board adopt resolution determining revenues and millages to be levied for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen? I have a motion and a second, please.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. Ely. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the board concerning the millages? Any discussion, board?
Call a question.
Question has been called. In favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All, oppose, same sign, please? And the motion passes five zero. Mr. Superintendent.
Board, I recommend the board adopt the final budget for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen in the amount of five hundred and six million seven hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation that the board adopt the final budget for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen in the amount of five hundred and six million seven hundred and eighty-three thousand and seven hundred and, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars? I need a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mr. James. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the board concerning the final budget?
Ms. Boynton. Nancy Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlin, members of the board. Uh, my name is Nancy Noonan. I live at twelve two twenty, Southeast one hundred seventy-eighth Street, Summerfield, Florida, three four four nine one. I am standing before you as the chair of the Independent Citizens Referendum Oversight Committee. My vice chair, Jerry Dees, Jerry, stand up, please, uh, is here with me. And on behalf of our committee, I really want to thank the board and the superintendent and Mrs. Boston Ellis for providing our, uh, August twenty-sixth meeting real clarity on the budget. Uh, and specifically. And specifically, I want to acknowledge the fact that there is going to be a segregated account and a separate account number for the referendum dollars, so that everyone can more carefully track how the money is being spent for the targeted areas in the referendum. So that, I think, will make all of our jobs much easier. And we certainly appreciate the joint efforts of Mr. Tomlin and Mrs. Boston Ellis in assuring us that that's going to happen. And Madam Chair, we really appreciate you coming to our meetings. That's a sign to our committee that the board is actively involved and interested in what we're doing. And we intend to do a very good job for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan.
Thank you.
Well, we sincerely appreciate you coming to this meeting to give that special report to us for the budget. Is there any more, Madam Secretary? Any more discussion with the board? Ms. Stacy?
Tonight's a big night. The community has given us approximately fifteen million dollars of their property tax dollars. And the state has come through with additional dollars, so I don't know, we're up around maybe, what, twenty million? Twenty-two million more than maybe we had last year, but pretty much the same number of students that we had last year. This will be a time that will tell a lot. And I'm excited about the future of Marion County because, you know, we look at how much money is spent in Washington DC. They spend the most. I mean, have the least student improvement. Some of the worst test scores in some of the most districts that pay the most per student. And so I am looking forward to supporting this budget. And this will tell me a lot as a school board member. Over the many, many years, you know, money has been a problem and it's been a problem. But what this will tell me tonight is, do we have leadership issues in Marion County over the last twenty years? Or did we have money problems? And I'm looking for great results from these dollars. And I look forward to supporting the budget.
Mr. James?
First of all, I really would like to thank Superintendent and Mrs. Ellis for what they did this year in terms of the budget work sessions that we had. They were very thorough. And I just would like to assure the public out there that's watching this program tonight, we had some really thorough work sessions in terms of what we were doing, where the money was being spent. And it was very creative and it was very, very thorough. And I just want to commend them. Well done. And I hope all of you sitting out there saying, well, they didn't ask anything about the budget. Our questions were asked during the work sessions and the information that was, we asked for, the department brought it back to us and really, again, if you looked into your boxes, you found a complete summary again of what they've done. It was a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. James, Mrs. Ely?
I called Ms. Boston Ellis this morning and asked her a question about the referendum dollars regarding staff training. And I know we discussed it, but I didn't write it down. And I'm just very pleased to see that we are bringing back our peer teachers, who are going to work with our beginning teachers. That will be a great, great incentive for teachers to stay, our new teachers to stay as teachers and our first-year teachers. And also it will be a little bit of money in the pocket for our peer teachers. And I understand there's going to be some type of professional orientation program too, where they all come together throughout the year. And that is so needed. And I know that's going to, I know that's going to help student performance, Ms. Stacy. I know that will. And hopefully it will bring more new teachers to Marion County, knowing that we have this program going on. So thank you for putting that together for us.
Is anyone else?
Yeah. I'm just pleased as punch that all of our music and art and our special areas, their, every position is filled and our students are going to benefit from that. And we're just grateful for that. And thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis and, and Ms. Alice Passada. And Jennifer, thank you for the presentations. You guys were very thorough and very organized. And I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Is that why y'all get the awards every year?
Well, well, I just want to say, and I want to tell all those that are listening, I think that our financial department, Mrs. Boston Ellis, Alice Passada, Jennifer, they did a wonderful job. And the superintendent, we all worked together hard. And one of the things that I want you to know, we didn't spend all the money. The superintendent took a proactive stance in understanding what the legislators are already saying, that we may be at a flat rate next year, but we decided with the superintendent to save some of that referendum dollars. We don't know what tomorrow will bring. So we're, I'm glad to see that we're taking a proactive stance for the district, rather than later on having to be very reactive. So I want to thank you, Mr. Superintendent and your staff, for bringing us a budget that was well thought through. Thank you so much. Any more comments?
One more thing.
Yes, Ms. Stacy?
I don't know how I got past it, but to thank Mr. Dees and, and Ms. Nancy, the people in the community, there's so few people in the community that's involved. That's involved because it takes time out of their evening. It takes time out of their life. And people who are activists within the, within the community in different areas, we have the county commissioner, we have the school board, those people play a very, very important role in our success. And, and I would like to thank Nancy for her hours. She and I have had lunch together. We've talked about this. This, we've been working together on, on things. And her ideas are fantastic because she's, she's walked this walk with students for many, many years. And, and we must thank that committee for the time that they're investing of their time, when honestly, very, very few people are that involved as a volunteer in something that takes this much time. So thank you.
All right, Ms. Stacy. Thank you. And Ms. Noonan and Mr. Dees, you know, you know how I feel about you. I really appreciate the work that you go through and that you, and the time you put in to be a member of the Independent Oversight Referendum Committee. I think it's, it's, when you arise to the call, is what I call it, you know? Because you, there's a duty, a responsibility, and you, you surely have taken it upon yourself. So thank you very much. Is there any more discussion?
Call a question.
Question has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes five zero. Thank you so much. May I have a, a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted? I need a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. Ely. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes five zero. Board, may I have a motion to approve the following donations? Five thousand dollars to community technical adult education from Summit Lynn Veterans Club. Kawasaki lawnmower valued at twenty-nine hundred from Dr. N. H. Jones PTO. Twelve Dell laptops valued at two thousand dollars to Fort King Middle School from Lockheed Martin. One thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and sixteen cents to Hammid Bowen Elementary School from Ocala West United Methodist Church. One thousand three hundred dollars to Hillcrest Public School from Jeffrey Elser CPA PA. Two thousand dollars to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks from Whole Kids Foundation. Three thousand dollars to Marion County Public Schools Homeless Need Children's Program from Loretta and Jerry McCrone. Three thousand two hundred dollars to Silver River Museum from the Duke Energy Foundation. And we're going to amend for the purposes of the initial donation from the First Baptist Church at the villages approved on February the twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, nine hundred, fifteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars to Staten Wellsville Elementary School for building a pavilion to purchasing furniture for schools media center. So, so what they're doing is changing the donation from building a pavilion to purchasing furniture for the schools media center. Twenty-five hundred to Vanguard High School from Cone Distributing. I need a motion and a second to approve those donations?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. King, seconded by Mrs. Ely. Is there any discussion, Mr. Superintendent?
Mrs. Boynton, I apologize for correcting you. I thought it was the Dr. N. H. Jones Parent Teacher Organization. That is written correctly. It is the Dr. N. H. Jones Parent Organization. That's why it just says P.O. in there. My apologies.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion? Call a question. All in favor of accepting the donation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes five zero. Mrs. King, would you like to thank our donors tonight for us?
I would. Thank you from the school board, as we are very appreciative of your donations. Those donations truly make a difference in our students' academic performance or what's going on in the classes and teachers. And we're just very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Ely, how much was that?
Okay, twenty-three thousand eight hundred and seven dollars and sixteen cents.
I ask her all the time. I know she keeps that record for us. Thank you.
It shows how much our, our business community cares about our schools and our kids.
Do we have any community reports or concerns? But the next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, September the seventeenth, two thousand and fifteenth, and nine a.m. The purpose of the work session is to review the magnet school admissions criteria and teacher evaluation. At this point, I ask any board members, is there anyone that has a comment, any concern? So I'll start with you, Mr. James?
I'm a pastor.
Okay. Mrs. King?
I do. I'm going to start off positive. Last week I went to Spire Elementary. And I just want to say that it was a very nice and pleasant experience when you're sitting with the principal and she looks at you and says, "I love my job." And then it followed up with a staff meeting in the media center with the teachers. And they were having the best time. They were laughing. It was the end of the day, you know? And that was positive and that was something really nice to see. And I would like to start off positive. I also want to talk about an article that was in last week's newspaper. There was an article on the attendance matters that stated that about eighty-one hundred and fifty students missed eighteen days or more, meaning that they missed at least ten percent of the entire school year. The article also stated that Marion County had the fourth lowest average daily attendance rate compared to the state's twenty-five larger school districts. That was a little disheartening. How did we get the idea to bring up only one percent in our attendance? I'm kind of curious why we, why we would say only one percent? Why wouldn't we have high expectations and strive to bring it up to maybe a hundred percent? You know, start high? The article also stated that we have attendance specialists, social workers, and attendance clerks to track data. We have this data. I posed the question and I asked, now, what are we going to do with this data, rather than say, yes, we have an attendance issue? So I'm posing a question that maybe in the future, we can get some good answers.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Mrs. Stacy?
Well, I've got one little thing I'd like to talk about, but I'd like to address what Mrs. King just said. As far as how we're going to track it, I've been working on the attendance issue for a long time here. And we've made tremendous progress, tremendous, because I was able to get a workshop on it and really address it. The school board will be getting the data. The state statute says that. The school board shall get data on number of students, the percentage, the, the students' names that missed. It's either ten or fifteen days in the first ninety days of school. All these years it's been in statute, we've never seen that, which could explain why the school board was caught off guard when we saw this. And so that's one of the reasons that I went to our staff about five months ago and began fighting this attendance issue. In the fighting of it, we will be now receiving this data that you're talking about, when the students are absent. But one question I do need to pose to Mr. Vianello or maybe Ms. Chrisalka. I've tried to call a couple of times and I know you're so busy with school starting. This is something for you to give me an answer another day. But this, when the school board does receive our document that has the students' names, after nine, after the first ninety-day count, I expect to have that. Access to it, website, however y'all want me to have it, because state statute says I have it. I get it. I want to make sure that we're including, like on the code of conduct, a certain number of unexcused absences. I believe it's two counts towards an absent day. I want to make sure that Skyward or whatever type of computer system we're using will be able to also calculate those numbers in with that ninety-day count, so that I will know the kids that have, you know, just because they missed maybe eight days and not ten, then if we calculated what the code of conduct says, a certain number of unexcused absences equals an absent day. So I want to make sure that those kids are also included in this document that the school board gets, because I want to see the real numbers on that. So we'll talk, you can call, well, he can. That's okay. I'll talk to you about it. But I said it and you can pass the word on to, to Mr. V. And, because we do want to make sure and include that two or three unexcused tardies equals a day absent as far as going to the truancy court. So I want to make sure that when you give me my ninety-day count on the kids, that, you know, my ninety-day of the kids that are truant, I want to be able to make, I want to make sure that that's also included. I'd also like to make another comment. I didn't pull C thirty-six tonight. But I do want to make a comment about these, these, these programs that we purchase. C thirty-six was Ready Math Achieve Packs. We buy so many programs that teachers tell me a lot of times aren't working. That they have, you know, computer programs and different things. It's just not really working. And they just get to learn one and then they totally have to learn another one. And I would like to start seeing some backup. When, when these programs are purchased, I'd like to see some research that backs it up besides the guy selling it said it's good. You know, the guy selling it said it's good, so we buy it. I'd like to start seeing, because I looked all through it and I can't find any documentation or research. There's websites and there's whatworks.gov and there's all kinds of things. There's, I believe Hopkins has an education site. And you can see a lot of these programs that have actually been given the test as far as research goes. So I would like to see that. When, when these programs come to us, I'd like to see some type of research that says they believe it's going to work, besides just a consultant came along and said it. Yeah, I've asked for that before and I'm, and I'm still on that topic. So I'll start asking for it every week if I need to. Now, another thing, we have talked about the upcoming delegation that's coming, the legislative delegation and talking with them. I was in touch with the vice chair, Amy Lockhart, in Seminole County. She and I talk fairly often.
Ms. Stacy, that's another item that we're going to go over.
Are we going to go with that tonight?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I thought we were going to do it on board concerns. We're not?
We're going to, later on, after this, then we're going to go over that.
Okay, I'm done then.
All right. Mrs. Ely?
I believe attendance does count. And I know that we've, we have nine parents that are out there working in various schools, making phone calls to parents, providing some kind of incentive to get those kids to school. So those are nine people. Am I correct, Mr. Wees, that we did not have last year? And I, I would like to see, you know, how that's working early into school a few weeks. But hopefully, just, I know if I was a parent and got a phone call and go, okay, Johnny was not really that sick. I'll send him to school tomorrow. But, but when parents get a call from the school- But, but when parents get a call from the school, that, that parent knows that the school cares, and that's what we need. And it's not a, you know, it's, it, it's a friendly call, just, "What can we do to get your child to school? We missed him today in school." So let's, let's see how, how those nine pairs are working out. And along those lines, um, I'm going to school, to school advisory council meetings next week at seven in the morning. Uh, I know that's right time for everybody, but, uh, wakes up and, um, but I, I advi- I recommend for parents and grandparents, if you wanna get involved in your child's school, we have four SAC meetings that are required a year, that's school advisory council. And you sit in a meeting for one to two hours with the principal and the key people of the school to find out the inner workings of the school, and what's working and what's not. And that's a place that you can, you have a voice, and you al- you also get an education as to what's going on in your child's school, as well as how you can help as a parent or grandparent. So please go check with your, um, school website to see when the SAC meeting is, school advisory council. And I would love to see you at some of my SAC meetings in, in my district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ely. Mr. Lake, do you have your comments?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Boynton. Just two or three things, board. Uh, today is day sixteen of, of school. Uh, Star Banner ran an article last week that, uh, may have drawn some concern. I'm not sure exactly why. They, they talked about us being under projection by about five hundred students. I can share with you that as of last Friday, we were only under projection by two hundred and forty students. Today's the day after Labor Day, and I dare say by the end of the week, we'll probably be at our projection, if not higher. Uh, Mrs. Crisalka and Mrs. Oliver in our Employment Services Division are in the process right now of transferring units, teaching units from school to school, or making the decisions that need to be made to balance our classes and our, our staffs at various schools. We hope to be finished with that near the end of this week, if not by the end of this week. Lot of discussion already about, uh, the concept of student attendance tonight, and, uh, I hope you have recognized, and, and we have announced before, that we are having that September as Student Attendance Matters Month, and we've done a number of things in reference to that. I'm happy to report to you that just yesterday, our truancy intervention partnership program met, the advisory group met, and Judge Taddy has decided to even support that even in a greater way, a larger courtroom, more staff dedicated from his staff, so we'll, we will be able to bring additional persons, uh, to that, uh, to that venue, should there be poor attendance from those students. And, Miss King, we certainly are using, using the data that, that we have, which doesn't just sit on the shelf somewhere. Um, Mrs. Stacy's requested the, the report. We're also gonna be able, Mrs. Stacy, for your comparison, also be able to give you a report from the last ninety days of last school year, just as a comparison. Our staff has been busy doing other things, you know, and also getting ready for school. You will have a report, uh, after the first ninety days of school this year. And we believe that with our new software system, we'll even be able to give you periodic reports after that, if you're, you're so interested. Please keep in mind that those reports already go out to our staff, and our, and our staff, especially through Matt Lane, are, are working on that. Our principals have participated in an exercise using their own student data, just at our last principal's meeting, uh, to go through with some ways they're sharing best practices on how they can improve attendance. And if you have not, I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. Matt Lane has been sent, uh, to, uh, to take, or Director of Social Works and Soc- Social Work Services and Psychological Services. He's sending out a weekly update on a push for these four weeks in September. I'll ask Mr. Vianello to ask Mr. Lane forward that to you, so you can see that we are certainly busy working on that. So, uh, we, we don't just let things sit on the shelf. We're, we're very concerned about this issue also. And final thing I'll say is to thank Ann Shuley tonight for filling in for Brenda. Uh, I know this is a, a complex board meeting. I appreciate her attention to detail here and getting us through here successfully tonight. That's all I have. Ms. Boynton?
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. Uh, Madam Secretary, do you have any comment?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you. I too thank you for your, um, commentary on meetings and doing all you do for us. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. All right, board, I, to have a few things that we need to discuss, board, and I'll start off light first and just remind everyone, we have a payroll deduction campaign by the Public Education Foundation. It's not just for board members, it's for employees too. So if you, um, get these cards, you know, fill them out. Thank you so much for that. Um, I wanna address a, a letter that I received, um, about our Skyward program and the Encore program for the IEP. Just want, that's this person who didn't give a name to know that the district is really working on that, and thank you for sharing your concerns with us. Uh, and I know in our last work session, you were asked, um, to bring additional information that we would like to present to our legislative delegation, or we could, uh, keep these, the ones that we have, the five that we have, uh, add to. So does any board member have any concern? I'll start with you, or addition, I'll start with you, Mrs. Ely.
Uh, well, I sent you an email about evaluating teachers, and the new law that gives Florida teacher bonuses based on SAT scores is crazy. And I, I just don't believe that an SAT score from high school is going to warrant necessarily warrant a good teacher. I don't know how, I, I'm not sure that, um, how far they've gotten into it, but it looks like it's pretty much a done deal. But, um, and this is a one-year thing. I, I hope to goodness it doesn't happen another year, because that bonus would only give, um, that, that extra bonus would only be for four, forty-four hundred teachers, and.
Across the state.
Across the state. And we had sixty-eight thousand teachers rated highly effective last year. So, um, although sixty-eight thousand, only four, four thousand, four hundred would get that additional ten thousand dollars, based on their SAT scores from high school. And I don't know how we could put that in, but I just think it's ludicrous that, um, that the senator from, um, Fresno, from Miami, passed this through. I just don't know how it happened.
I'll just, for information, I'm sure you read that that, um, that bill itself was not passed. As legislators, it was, it, it was dropped in committee and then somehow appeared
Yeah, yeah.
on, on the budget, so.
Yeah, it's on the budget.
It is kinda concerning, um, you know, because how many teachers got to have had their SAT or ACT scores, you know? Some of them are, are retired or in drop, you know, so, and, and these are highly qualified teachers that we truly respect. So if we could.
I don't, I don't know what kind of verbiage we can put together, but, um.
We're gonna look to our attorney to help us with that while we do that, if you think so, board.
I drafted one.
The, no, you drafted the letter, but we, we wanted to take it to our, um, um, the legislative delegation.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Boynton, in, in reference to that now, I know we, we will have people speaking with the legislative group.
Uh-huh.
And will this be one of the, one of, one of the primary ones that we will be talking about?
That's what we're gonna decide today. Okay?
Okay, so, while we're doing it, let's go ahead and mark that one down because, uh.
I, I think it should be. And we had five from last year that, to me, are all very, very current and appropriate, but maybe make this number six or put it up at the top.
Can I get a consensus and we add it to the list? Consensus, Mrs. Stacy? All right, so there's a consensus that we add this to the list, so we just need to wordsmith it so that, um, it can be easy, the topic, the conversation will be easy for the person who's gonna represent us at that meeting, and, um.
Uh, number two, it talks about administrator evaluations, and maybe we can incorporate it in that, or, or put it right below it. That talks about, uh, Florida Standards Assessment's results, but the, they do list teacher administrator evaluations in that.
I, I, I think, yeah, it, but it, but then if you read it, it says to delay the use, so would you like them to delay the use of using this, uh, money, board?
No, no, that's not.
Okay. I would say it may well be in its own items, and we would just wordsmith it and say, um.
We need to just add that as a thing, as a number.
Yeah, add it completely by sound.
Number six, okay.
I would say. And the, the governor didn't veto this one. He, I'm just thinking out loud here on how we could word it. What, Mr. , Mr. Um, Lake, can you think of a quick, I tell you, Mr. Chris, Kevin, can you take this and work the wording out for us?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you on that, so.
And I made a copy of the article in Education Week, if you'd like to see that, to help with.
All right. Now, the, I do have a question, uh, board, uh, on number two. Do we wanna ask them to delay it until two thousand and seventeen, or just not put a year on it at all? If you wanna strike two thousand and seventeen, or we just wanna just say it to two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen, or just say delay the use of, um, delay the use of the Florida Sunshine Assess- Florida Standards Assessment's results to determine school grades, student promotion, uh, retention and graduation, and teacher administrator evaluations until, should we say, two thousand and seventeen still?
I think so.
You think so?
Yeah.
All right, so do we have a consensus to leave it there like that? All right, and we have a consensus to use the, and, the entire, um, number five plus number six, our six added, uh, legislative, uh, discussions?
Okay.
Okay? So this will be our platform. All right. So, going over again, I have a consensus for this platform. Mr. James?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Stacy?
I have a whole different idea. I wanna go in, so y'all do what you want.
Okay, so now, okay, if you wanna go into your whole new idea, can you, um, you don't, so you're saying no? Do you have anything else you would like to add to this?
I wanna stop them all together and just go back to norm testing that worked for my kids and Mr. Tomlin's kids and everybody's kids that have great degrees and great lives today, because they never went through any of this torture. We are, um, a national norm testing with paper and pencil. We could do it four hours, instead of spending twenty or thirty days disrupting the computer labs, taking kids in and out, disrupting the library, because we've got lot computers in there. We have taken a bad pot of stew that's burned and tried to tweak it. You cannot fix a bad pot of stew by adding anything to it if it's burned. You gotta throw it out and start over. I am personally done with the games. I don't know who y'all, which board, I know last year I spoke to the board, but it sounds like I'm not going in the same direction y'all are going in, so I'll probably talk for myself and say how I feel to them. And, um, I know them all, and they know me.
All right, Mrs. Stacy, so.
And here's the Seminole County right now.
No, no.
Oh, well, you asked me why.
Okay.
Don't tell ya.
Okay, Mrs. Stacy, if you would li- if you would allow me to move the me- meeting along so that I can get where you're at on this, but I wanted to say to you, do you, if you have something to bring to the board, we're, we, we work together on, when we come to this table, to listen to each other. So you're saying that you would like to add norm testing to that? So is there a place in this, in our six items that we want?
I would like to take number two out, forget about it, and do what the number twelve ranked district in the state is doing. Um, one of our top performing districts. Um, we have a letter that came from them in July talking about it, and we've kinda not done anything about it. Um, they have, they're going whole hogs with this, and our district answered back, and I got a comment back. What I did, to this response from, um, the superintendent, Dr. Walt Griffin, sent us a, um, a letter talking, copied us what he sent to the Commissioner Stewart on norm testing. We answered back, and I got from the clerk's notes in Seminole County. Um, the Marion County School Board has engaged in a number of discussions regarding student testing. At this point in time, the board has not taken a formal position pertaining to the Florida Standards Assessment. I have copied your email in my response to our board chair, Mrs. Boynton, and Mr. Tomlin sent that on Au- on August the thirteenth. And so between now and when we meet with the legislators, we don't have time to take a position now, because I didn't know that this would be answered for us, and I don't know, you know, maybe Mr. Tomlin perceived in our conversations that we just had not made a decision, but we haven't really talked about it.
You read that, that is a statement that I replied to, to the secretary of Mr. Griffin, and I accurately recorded that you have had a number of discussions about that, and to date, whenever that was written, this board has not taken any specific action, and that is accurate.
That's accurate. I agree. That's accurate. That's why I'm saying I don't believe at this point, before the legislative delegation comes, we have a chance to take a position. So I have formed my own position. And y'all can talk about the FSA till cows come home, but I'm not talking about FSA. I'm talking about standard, I'm talking about norm testing and, um,
Norm reference.
Norm reference testing, and, and it, it's so much cheaper, it's so much less disruptive. I believe that the twenty years of FCAT, FSA, and everything has been a co- total complete failure, and it is a bad pot of stew, and somebody has to stand up and say it's time to throw it out, and we're just not doing it anymore, and that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Stacy.
So y'all, I'll be talking for myself, so y'all, I'll go along with you.
You realize when you say you're gonna talk for yourself.
Myself?
You're just gonna be nasty thing.
Nancy Stacy's school board member in Marion County District One is my position, and I'm perfectly legal to talk from my, my elected position. But I do not represent the school board, because y'all are gonna have your representative. Last year I was your representative.
You're gonna have to make that statement that you don't, you're not representing the school board.
I think, I think when our school board person stands up and says it, and I stand up and say, "I'm speaking for Nancy Stacy's Marion County School Board Member, District One, this is how I feel," they'll be pretty clear.
And since you know everybody, they will, they will, truly.
They know me.
All right. Um, I, I, I would, would like to see if you agree with all of any of these that we are gonna be talking about, though, that we can speak in one voice to our legislators on. Is there anything on here that you agree with?
Mm-hmm. I like the, uh, adopt a comprehensive opt-out policy, allowing parents to excuse their students without penalty.
Mm-hmm.
I like that one. I'll let you, I'll let you read them off, and then I'll just say if I support it, so that we'll know what everybody else is supporting too.
Okay, it's provide a three-year transition to completely develop all components of a high-quality, valid, reliable, and defensible statewide assessment.
I think we've given them twenty years, and they hadn't done it yet, so I'm not for that.
Okay, delay the use of, the use of the Flor- Florida Standards Assessment's results to determine school grades, student promotion, retention and graduation, and teacher administrator evaluation until two thousand and seventeen.
Definitely for that.
I'm for doing it permanently, so y'all put whatever date you want on it.
Yeah, Mrs. Stacy?
I am just, I am up to here with this FSA stuff. Students are losing their education. Kids can't even give us change at McDonald's, but they could twenty years ago before we started all of this stuff.
Well, the, I mean, this board agrees with you on, on so many, so many things, and what we're trying to do is to speak in one clear voice to our legislators.
A united front.
Although we don't speak or, or even have the power unless we come together as a group, you know, as one body. So.
Yeah, I support that number three, and, um, we.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna move on, Mrs. Stacy, and.
I'll just raise my hand if I agree.
Well, we've already went over, we all came to the consensus of what we wanted to use.
It comes to the consensus that we would have six.
Six?
Yes.
And then that's it, so.
And we're agreeing.
All right, so there's a consensus for the six. Mrs. Stacy has, for the record, has said she will represent herself and not the district, and will make them understand that she's not representing the district.
I represented district last year, 'cause I agree that I'm for this year.
All right, the, the meeting will be on the, on the fourteenth. Um, do you have any board member who would volunteer to go to this event before I, if I don't?
I, I already ate my lunch.
Okay, so, Miss, Miss Ely, you'll stand and speak on behalf. What about you, Mrs. King? Would you go? Okay, so, uh, so we'll tell two board members going to this event, Mrs. King and Mrs., um, Ely, and Mrs. Ely will stand with Mrs. King to represent the district.
And Mrs. Stacy's attending and speaking for herself.
Thank you. All right, so, as many of, many of you know, I did go out of town for a School Board Association, um, meeting. Did hurt myself there, but it's not workers' comp for y'all.
That was a rough hotel stay then.
It was rough.
Hold up your hand.
Holding up my hand. It was, it was an accident by staff there at that hotel, so I don't think the district should be responsible for it in any way. Um, I think that hotel understood that when I left, you know? But I really had a great time. Um, you know, and we were in a Liddito, Liddito Beach Resort, and I had never been on an island that I didn't know was an island. So it was just nice, but there were so many things that happened, and they brought Seminole County, did come to the meeting, but they also had another county, I think it was Sarasota County, um, and they, and we all talked about the, the assessments, the results of the validity of the test. So I brought back with the PowerPoint presentation and the letter from the superintendent, uh, Walt, um, Griffin, uh, from Seminole County, and we were given an opportunity to say, "We're gonna bring this back to our boards, and we, we need to discuss it and maybe have a workshop on where we stand now that we've gotten the validity of the. maybe have a workshop on where we stand now that we've gotten to the validity of the test results." Uh, there were some items, there, if you turn to page ten, you'll see, um, some things that said that, that the concerns brought forward by stakeholders in this test was the amount of time students spend testing, the loss of instructional time due to testing, the re, redeployment of computers for assessment instead of learning and coursework, the unreliable computer platform that resulted in students having to restart tests, retake tests, and even lose tests. There are some concerns that were mentioned at that meeting, and I believe that rather than, than, not being rude, Stacy, but having one person talk on it, the whole Board needs to sit, we need to have a workshop, look at what, it's a hundred and eighty-six page report, we need to look at what that report really has said. You know, it was only talking about the validity of certain parts of that, and so we need to look at that and understand how it's still going to affect our teachers, our students, you know? Number one, our students, the amount of time that it's gonna take for them to take this test, taken away from their learning, you know? And, and it was so, so many wonderful things brought up, so I'd like to get a consensus from the Board that we actually really look at this from Seminole County, and that we really workshop this and come up with something from our Board, from our stance on how we feel about these things. Can I get a consensus for that?
Yeah, I just, I want, wanna bring this up, because, um, remember back to the beginning of August, I believe I brought this up.
You did.
And Bobby, Mr. James, you were not here that day, and, um, I think we agreed that there was not consensus, 'cause I think we agreed, and maybe they didn't, and we were gonna wait until you were here to discuss this topic. So, I'm a little concerned that we're sending letters out after we had that discussion, but we didn't ever have a consensus and agree what we actually thought as a Board.
As a Board, well, well, the, if letter, but the letters didn't come from the Board. The thing that, I think, the information that comes from the Board is what the, the, across the state, they do look at, and, um...
I, I, I've had, um, emails sent to me on it, and I brought it up to, up to you all, and I think we were all finally in a stance of waiting to see what the validity of the test results were.
Exactly, and we were.
You know, I think, because we didn't really feel like they were finally, it was a valid test, but, you know? But I think at this point, that there is some movement across the state, other than Seminole County, uh, Seminole County, that there is some interesting things that we as a Board need to look at and come together and agree on, you know, and send to our legislators. We don't have to wait until they come to us, you know, for Legislative Deleg- Delegation Day, we can send this to them when we complete it, because they're still gonna be in Tallahassee. You know, they're gonna be there. We could go to their offices here and talk, representing our district, so it, it's something that I think that we can sit and talk about more thoroughly, you know, and, and this report that I put in your hands, I think I gave everybody a copy, is very ex, uh, extensive.
But you said it was how many pages?
Well, this is just a micro, this condensed what they found, but the actual report is a hundred and eighty-six pages.
So, are we gonna be reading all?
If, if I can, I can send you a copy of the report.
No.
Miss Stacy, and then Mr. James?
I have read every single page of that report, and that report, often the validation committee, from the validation company that was validating test, basically said, "Well, you guys have a nice plan, but we really can't even see where you addressed the standards in it."
Right.
And so, you addressed, you know, kinda what's happening in Utah, 'cause we bought Utah's questions, but the exact, uh, you have to, you have to really stretch to say, they basically said, 'cause the, 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 the organization that did the test, they, they gave the facts, and if you read the report like I did, you see that basically what they said was, "You have a nice plan, we just can't see you followed it." But if you follow this plan you have, then you, you gotta, you know, you'll have a good test, but I can't see where you addressed anything that's in your plan. So it's like you built a house, and you walk inside and you go, the doors aren't, the walls aren't anywhere where they're supposed to be in the plan, that's kinda what the report, what I got out of it. So, um, because, and then the state political people took it, and they kinda twisted it, and they said, "Well, we have a plan," and they kinda worded it their political way to make it look like it was validated. And so, um, it was a, a hoot, I'll just say.
Alright, thank you. Mr. James?
Uh, just, just a couple of questions that I wanna make to State.
Okay.
I, I agree that we need to have a work session on, on this.
Thank you, sir.
And I think we need to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, the, the second thing, have any of this come up with the Central Florida Coalition? Have you discussed it at all?
I did not attend the last meeting, and there has not been a meeting since the validity study was published a week and a half ago.
As you know, Mr. James, um, the head, the Chair of the Seminole County is the Chair of the Central Florida Coalition, so, um, they, they sent the information out to us by email, they did not, they not have a thorough question, a session on it yet.
Okay, I, I'm permission for me to get it back, back where I've been around this long time. Uh, my, my, the reason I'm asking this question is that I know that when you have one voice and you have a collective group, just like we saw with the STEM group here today, and the STEM group originate, originated with Orange County, the thirteenth school district at this time with, with Central Florida Coalition. I don't wanna just have a, a work session and we speak as one. I would like, uh, at some point, I know you, you, you go out and you all talk with, and we can talk with Pina and talk to some of the other Board members and find out where they are, so we can, as a, as a collective group, because there is number, there is power in numbers, and when you have that many people, over eight hundred and fifty thousand, close to nine hundred thousand students involved, then it'll make a difference. I just think it's okay that we, we have a work session, so we will be thorough, a thorough debate with it. But I also feel very strongly that we take advantage of the fact that we are a member in this standing with the Central Florida Coalition, and let's get more than just Seminole County, because I know that we have the differences in there, and I think you may have saw that or seen that when you were at, at the work session. So let's look at, let's look at it in two ways. Let's look at it as a work session, let's look at it as bringing this information to the Central Florida Coalition, and try and get some feedback from other districts, the other thirteen.
I agree, yeah.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, Miss Stacy?
Yeah, Mr. James, yes, you mentioned the, um, coalition and the fact that the Chairman of the Coalition and I agree on it. So, I'm in agreement with, with Miss Calderon, who is the Chairman of the thirteenth district organization, and we're on the same side of this, and I will be speaking from that voice, where we agree, um, that's a, a, a big district with a very high achieving district, and I completely agree with the Chairman and the Vice Chairman of their School Board, who also happens to be the Chairman of the Coalition you're speaking of. So, I am not out on a limb by myself. I have very, very knowledgeable people who agree with me a hundred percent.
Let me just...
Mr. James?
Kena is just one person, one voice in this group, in that Central Florida Coalition. I don't have a problem with Kena, we know one another from way back. All I'm saying is let's present it there, because there's more than one opinion that's sitting around that's there.
You're right, Mr. James, because at the, at the meeting that I was at, you know, they, not only did they have the Central, uh, Seminole County, but they had, like I said, Sarasota, Sarasota County spoke of the, for the against, you know? Seminole was for this...
Norm testing.
Norm testing, and Sarasota County spoke against, and I, so you're right, there's a different opinions from Boards around the state, and for us to hear back on what they're saying, it's very important for us as a district to know, but to stand wherever we fall at, we need to stand there and have our voice there. I, I think that's important, and if we could get that...
Sarasota is a very wealthy district also, they might, can afford this, but we had to have a referendum just to get our music, I don't think we can afford it.
Um, thank you, Miss Stacy, and I'll comment on that later, but can, we do have a consensus to go for a works, a work session on this?
But I, but I would like, yes, ma'am, we can certainly do that. I would like to make sure that Mrs. Weldon is available to coordinate the presentation and to be able to answer questions.
Why don't I give her some, give you the information to give her?
I have that, I'll get this copy to her, I'll find out when she's available at one of our work sessions before I determine the date, with your permission.
We'll have a session at the end of the month to be determined, so...
Yes. If it, we, we have any time this month.
We're gonna try to do it as soon as we possibly can.
Okay.
In September.
Alright, thank you so much, Mr. Superintendent, and thank you, thank you, Board, and, um, Miss Stacy, uh, at this event that we, that I was at in Sarasota County, one of the things that I'm very proud of, the citizens of Marion County, is when they voted for the referendum for the return of arts, the music, and in Sarasota County, which is a rich county, they, actually, they're, we are a step above them, you know, and, and so when you're looking at districts and you think, "They're rich," well, they really took the money away from the arts, and it was the community that came forward, not just for a, a referendum, but they had to go to, resort to donors, and so now they have a foundation that's actually working, so I told them about what happened here, and I do have business card from the foundation that said, "Oh, but that's wonderful what you're doing in Marion County, uh, maybe you want to take it a step further," and then gave me the, the card, that maybe we can apply for a grant, so I'll probably be taking it over to, to you, Dr. Dewey, so you can look at it and see what the criteria is that we would qual- qualify for a grant. So I, I really was really impressed with the event the entire time, uh, and, and got to network with individuals on a different level, and thank you for allowing me to attend, Board, thank you, sir.
Can I say something about you?
Go ahead, Miss Stacy.
I would like to say to those that are listening, that Mrs. Boynton does go, and she does listen to what, um, other districts are saying, and she has brought things back from her meetings, she doesn't just go and come back with, um, talking points, she does challenge and she questions, and I would like to say to Mrs. Boynton, our Chairman, that is an asset that I appreciate, that you do not just take things for face value when it doesn't make sense. You do ask questions, and you bring back good information, and you bring back money. You, where, where Mrs. Boynton hears that y'all want her money, she starts tracking it, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Miss, um, Stacy. One last thing is that we, we, um, we were tasked with drafting a letter, uh, in support of the MEA on their feelings on the Best and Brightest Teacher Scholarship, we'll have it in the back room for you all to sign, 'cause it's for all Board members to sign, if you don't mind. Thank you, and there being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Same here.
Moved by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mrs. King. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Everybody's on the side of the two?
And the motion passes five zero, and the meeting is adjourned.